We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting today, Tuesday, June 5th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for the invocation by Pastor Kathleen Hawkins, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner McCray.
With our head bowed. Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you for the meeting that is getting ready to take place. We welcome you within this place on tonight. We ask you, oh Lord, that as the voices begin to speak tonight, that our ears be tended to hear. We ask you, oh Lord, that there be transparency, that there be everything, oh God, that is coming before you this night, oh Lord. We bring it before. We ask you, oh Lord, that every petition, oh God, and everything that's going to come before this meeting, that it will be handled according to that status and that will. Let the peace of God surpass all understanding, with rule and reign within this place. In Jesus' name we do pray. Let everyone say amen.
Amen.
Say amen again.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, and to this world with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Katz.
Here.
Commissioner McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Casello.
Here.
All present.
All right. Do I have any additions, leations, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Beginning with informational items by members of the city. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Yeah, I met with Bonnie Miskel with regards to the potential Wawa development on Wilbright and Congress, and that's it.
All right. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no disclosures, but I was challenged by three young men at the last commission meeting to have a meeting with them on that following Monday at 1 o'clock, which I did. The meeting was very informative, and I'm glad I see a lot of ministers here tonight because my eyes and my ears both came open. They asked us how do we distimulate information here in this city? And we said we give it to the churches. And the three young men looked me straight in my face and told me, "I appreciate that." What about us that don't go to church? My eyes came open. I said, "You know what? This is a segment that we are missing." Those young men said, "We'll step up to the plate, and we'll do what we can to make this better." I also gave them flyers for a meeting that was taking place at St. John's. I heard about the meeting. I wasn't there, but I want to tell you all, thank you for showing up, speaking up, and your voices was heard. Thank you for tying up the panel, because they couldn't answer your question. That's just how dynamic you all was. I'm looking at you now. Okay, also, that's it for now, but Mayor, you also requested that Saturday that you needed someone to go to, I mean, the Muslim Interfaith Dinner. I'm happy to say, Mayor, that I was the chosen one. I volunteered. I learned a lot. We need to go out and reach out to others and find out more about what's happening and their spiritual walk and their spiritual realm of life. I was taken back. They didn't even know I was there until it was over because I didn't want to sit at the head table. I wanted to sit out among the congregation, find out what was they saying, their voices. I was absolutely amazed. And when they found out I was there, they was a little upset because they said, "You're supposed to be sitting up here." And I learned, and I said the same thing. It makes no difference where I'm sitting at when my final days are over, long as I make it in. Upon leaving, the words that they did say to me was, "Peace and blessings." And that's what I'll leave with you tonight, peace as well as blessings. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Romulus?
Not too much disclosed tonight. Just want to share that the residents of Chapel Hill and Mission Hill, several communities in the southern portion of our city, decided to get together and throw a Get to Know Your Neighbor event, and just well attended by so many people. And it was at Forest Hills Park, just a great opportunity to just get to know people and see them, meet their kids. And, you know, sometimes we feel like we have lost that phrase that says, you know, "It takes a village." Sometimes we feel like in this day and age with Facebook and technology, we feel sometimes we've lost that dynamic in our culture. But that was an opportunity to truly get to know your neighbor and have the children get to know each other and have the parents know whose kid belongs to who and kind of keep that dynamic alive of, you know, it does take a village to raise a community. Therefore, if I see someone on the street and I know that that's somebody's kid, I can say, "Hey, saw your kid out there the other day." So just a great opportunity to just get to know people, and I would encourage this to be something that all communities strive to do, to just get out there and congregate with each other and have families get to know each other so we can better keep that dynamic alive in our cities where we can truly say it does take a village. So I was glad to participate in that and get to know our neighbors here in the southern portion of the city. In addition to that, I also was able to attend a scholarship and awards luncheon that was hosted by one of our organizations here in Palm Beach County called Scholar Career Coaching. And this is an organization that works with students at Atlantic High School and also at Boynton Beach High School, giving them career advice, giving them mentors to help kind of coach them through the process of college and life and all of that. So just again, an amazing opportunity to just see students' lives being changed by mentors who are solely just volunteering, just out of the goodness of their heart because they want to see changes happen in these kids' lives. So a great opportunity. I was there with the mayor to again just commend these students on their accomplishments and thank the selfless volunteers who are taking their time to mentor these kids, our kids, and help them become the change that we want to see in the world. So with that, that's all I have for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Casello?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a nice little segue. I had the opportunity to give the commencement speech to Freedom Shores 5th Grade graduating class, and I was, had to give a speech that lasted between seven and 10 minutes. And at this stage in my life, to think what I could possibly talk about to a group of 5th graders was really challenging. I will say that we put a lot of time and thought into it, and the reward was to see the excitement into these children's eyes and that they were going on to middle schools. And the biggest reward I got out of that was some of the grandparents texting me and calling me, telling me that, "Thank you for those great words of encouragement." So like Vice Mayor says, you know, we cannot forget our youth. They are future leaders of tomorrow, and I was just happy to be part of that ceremony to move these children on to middle school.
On May 17th, I attended the Finnish American Chamber of Commerce's breakfast and then sat on the board of the Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agency that was in Boynton Beach, and I believe I saw a couple of our commission that was there to get to learn a little bit more about what the Transportation Planning Agency does. That afternoon, I went to Boca Barrings regarding our kinetic art festival next year about the student involvement that Boca Barrings is sponsoring, I believe, a team from South Tech. And that evening, I attended Senator Lori Berman's office opening at our Children's Service Council building up on High Ridge Road. On the 18th, I attended the General Employees Public Pension Trustees Meeting and at the Village Royal on the Green, went to the Police Remembrance Event. On the 20th, I conducted the Gold Coast Band, and I tried something new this time. It was Semper Fidelis, and that was a lot of fun. On the 21st, I was there for the South Central Regional Wastewater Treatment Board. On the 23rd, I was inaugurated as the Palm Beach County League of Cities Big City Board of Director and attended the South Tech graduation. On the 24th, I attended Cross Point Elementary's Business Luncheon, went to the Palm Tram Service Board, and went up to Stewart to be on their panel for the Arts Council of Martin County regarding historic buildings because of the fact that we have saved our historic high school. The 25th, I met with the new Director General of the Consulate of Taiwan. The 28th, I went to Palm Beach Memorial for the Forgotten Soldier Outreach, and that evening went to our Boynton Beach American Legion 164 for their barbecue. On the 29th, I attended my Brother's Keeper Task Force Meeting and was there for the Budget Input Meeting. On the 30th, I was, I am the new Chairman of the Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board, also known as Palm Tram Connection, and I will be getting some more information on our announcements about that Palm Tram Connection, so for all of our residents. On the 31st, I attended the Business Development Bureau's Upper Level Breakfast and went to the Ribbon Cutting for Ufit, which is our gym over at the Boynton Beach Mall, attended a ribbon cutting over at Colonial Assisted Living, and then I attended the Community Conversation with the Criminal Justice Commission of Palm Beach County over at St. John's. On June 1st, I attended the Boynton Beach Dive Center's presentation on lionfish, which is an extremely invasive species that we need to help be the natural predator because there isn't one. On the Saturday, June 2nd, I attended our Community Emergency Response Team's training over at the Roland Green Municipal Complex. I went to Meadows Park for Gun Violence Awareness Day and to Chapel Hills Get to Know Your Neighbor. On the 3rd, I went to Hadassah's Florida Atlantic Office off of Congress for their Mazza hanging and the Scholar Career Coaching graduation. And then today, I attended the Vida Novo Ribbon Cutting where our David Scott is on the Board of Directors. It is a nonprofit agency that sole goal is to help youth aged 18 to 25 who may be homeless or just leaving foster care to give them the tools and skills necessary to be productive adults. And then at 1:30, I was at Sarah Sims Park with Habitat for Humanity and Boca Christian School for the Community Cleanup. And that is it for me. Is there, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one other interjection to do. Sunday afternoon at 3 o'clock, that was a birthday party, a celebration for a young lady here in this city. I was unable to attend, but she's 102 years old, and I'd like to say to this city at the next commission meeting that we recognize her longevity here in this city. She played a great part in my life when I was a young man, a boy, a tot, a lad, whatever you want to call me. She planted a lot of seeds in my life, and by me sitting up here tonight, they're growing. I see our family out here tonight. I want to tell you all, thank you. This commission will do something at the next commission meeting to recognize her birthday for 102 years here in the city of Boynton. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Romulus, you have something else?
Yes, I just wanted to bring attention to a news article that was online regarding the small infant that was found in our Boynton inlet a couple days ago. As a mom of two young children, it broke my heart to see that. So I just want to make sure to reemphasize to the community and to our public, there are several options, especially with our fire department being here. No questions need to be asked. A child can always be just dropped off, and that can be a way to provide assistance without having to find other means or other ways to have to take care of a situation with a child. It's very difficult when we see things like that, and that child was beyond help. I also do want to just commend one of our firefighters that was involved in finding and helping bring law enforcement to retrieve that small infant. It was our firefighter here, Chris Lemieux. I just want to thank him for his spotting that infant and bringing attention to that. So again, please, as a public, please let's always be mindful and keep a vigilant eye out for families that may be having difficulties and difficult times and try to give them the resources that they possibly can. We have so many opportunities here for help within our community, and it's sad to see an innocent life be wasted because someone possibly just didn't know where to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more from the commission? Seeing none, moving on to announcements. Our first announcement is that the city is accepting applications for community representatives on the city's sustainability team. Applications will be accepted through July 6th, 2018. Information, applications are available at the city's website. Do we have, I guess Rebecca Harvey able to give us a little bit more information?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, neighbors, and staff. I'm very pleased to announce that we now have the application open that we've been speaking of for a couple of months. So it's open. To join the city's sustainability team, which is a group of about 20 staff members representing nearly all city departments. We meet about once every two months, and our role is to advance the city's sustainability and resiliency initiatives. And it's an excellent time to hear more voices from the community. So I'm very excited to add some community representatives to the group. The term will be about, will be for two years, after which we'll have another application period. And similar to the advisory boards, this is not an advisory board, but it will be similar in that we will give preference to city residents. We also have on the application a number of subject areas that we are looking for expertise in to contribute substantive knowledge to the discussions on sustainability and resiliency. And yeah, it's a great time to join, so please tell your friends if you're interested in environmental issues and making Boynton Beach a greener and a more stronger, resilient place to live. We have a number of exciting initiatives going on with the town square development. The mayor has recently committed to the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy. We are refining and digitizing our climate action plan to make the results more understandable and easily, easy to communicate with the community. We're looking to get bike sharing going in the city and expand our solar initiatives and a number of other projects that I don't have time to bring up tonight, and I'm sure that members of the community have more ideas than we do. So please add your voice to our discussions. Tell your friends. There are some applications on the back table, and again, the application is online as well. Thank you very much.
Next announcement is that the budget workshop dates and times are Monday, July 16th, 2018 at 5:00 PM, Tuesday, July 17th, 2018 at 10:00 AM, and if needed, Wednesday, July 18th, 2018 at 2:00 PM. Lori, can you just explain what we're doing on the first day and why it's at 5:00?
We do a combination of starting late so people can get out of work and have a chance to come to the workshop. So we'll start 5:00 and go however long the commission's up to it. We'll start with departmental. We typically go through the major department budgets. The next day, we continue on with that. We go through capital. Probably by the second day, we're usually setting the tentative mileage rate and discussing the fire assessment rate resolution.
So you would hope to have the police and the fire done on the July 16th?
Yeah, it's always up to the commission, whatever order you like. So we set that when we start. So we typically do police, fire, development, you know, well, the utility will be the next day.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to public audience, individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations, and based upon last night's community conversation, I'm going to allow an extra 30 seconds for, because we may have new speakers, just to let them wrap it up, to finish their, what they would like to say. So please state your name and address before you begin speaking, and Jim will start the clock.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 South East 27th Way. At the last commission meeting, I asked for a ban on plastic straws and styrofoam. I still don't see it on the agenda. I also think we should be adding a fee for plastic bags because people do use them for other things. I know my kitties seem to use a lot for kitty litter, but I don't want to see a total ban on this because they are useful, but I think if we're paying a fee for them, that, you know, people stop throwing them on the ground. Since that time I brought it forth, we've had two horrible events that have occurred. A couple days after that last commission meeting, I'm sure you all saw on the news like I did, they found a turtle with a straw in its nose, and we all got to watch on the nightly news, Channel 5 is my choice, where they used forceps or pliers to extract that straw from that poor turtle's nose. And that's here in this area. That just appalls and disgusts me. Also, in the last couple days, you probably have seen that dead whale from Thailand. Before it died, it vomited out 40 plastic bags, and then they found another 40 bags in its stomach when they did the, is it necropsy? Necropsy? Yeah. How many more of God's creatures have to die or be injured because of our poor choices as human beings? This is a chance for our commission to go forward. Jupiter's working on this. You know, why can't we do it as well? Please move forward on this with the suggestions I've advocated, and let's be progressive as we're taking care of our citizens, but also the planet we live on. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor and all the other people on the council, commission. Well, my name's Jonathan Doring. Thanks for inviting me to speak to you. So I live here in Boynton Beach. I'm a Special Olympics athlete, also a global messenger, and a member of the Special Olympics State Athlete Congress, healthy athlete representative, and an athlete leader, where I served as chairman of the Palm Beach County Athletes Input Council for four years. I want to let you know that I love Special Olympics, and I call Special Olympics my dream maker. At this time, the sports I participate in are tennis, golf ball and golf. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm a little tongue tied today. It's all right. In the sport tennis, I just train year round with a coach and a hitting partner for at least five days a week. I participate in USTA tournaments and have been playing in a men's singles tennis league for five years at the city of Boynton Beach Tennis Center. Special Olympics has taught me so much and instilled in me a desire to learn, the ability to set realistic goals, and the knowledge that if I, wait a minute, is something wrong with this thing?
No, no, it's just sometimes there's some feedback.
Oh, I see. Sorry, I keep on, maybe I keep hearing things, or maybe there's something wrong. Now, it looked like I was saying, I work hard, I will eventually succeed. Each small success builds self-confidence, and yes, Special Olympics has taught me a lot, in fact, more than I can ever repay. My parents have received, recently reminded me that I have had many dreams in my life. Most of them have come true. I graduated from high school in Latana in the year 2000. In 2009, I received an associate's degree in computer science at Palm Beach State College. In 2011, I went to Athens, Greece, and won a gold medal at the 2011 State Games in men's tennis. In 2015, I attended Special Olympics World Games, Summer Games, as a tennis referee in Los Angeles. I did 19 matches already. And this year, I will be going to Seattle, Washington, for 2018 Special Olympics National Games in the next couple of weeks. So play tennis. Isn't that great? Well, don't worry. At least there'll be some athletes who will be going to the, other athletes here in Florida that will be going to, will be going to Seattle to play tennis and other sports, some other athletes here in Palm Beach County such as, forget about the speech. Well, there's other, there's other athletes in Palm Beach County that will play the, will play other athletes, I mean, other events. Well, ESPN will broadcast the games, so please check your local listings and days and times. In closing, I would like to tell you the most important lessons Special Olympics has taught in me. So I would like to invite all of you to be part of a team, the Special Olympics team, be a dream maker. Together, we can make dreams come true for many people, for so many people. Please join me on June 16th for a fundraising tennis tournament at the Palm Beach Municipal Tennis Center from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Lori Fasolo, Tennis Center Coordinator, has been working hard, had been working hard to put this tennis together, so you can play with me or simply watch. It will be great fun. So thank you very much for letting me speak, and see you on the 16th. And before we, before I continue, I have a little bit of surprise for you. Some lanyards and some, some permission forms, some registration forms. Here.
Just real quick.
Yes.
We live in Boynton Beach. I started playing tennis when, over here at the hard courts, like when he was six months old. So we have been supporting city activities for a very, very long time. And the way that this came about is Debbie Majors got in touch with me Thursday, I believe, and said that the city of Boynton Beach would like to honor my son for his going to National Games in Seattle in a few weeks, and they're lighting up the water tower this evening in his honor and support. So I thank you all very much for your support, and he's a little nervous, so.
I mind if we?
He was afraid with the three minutes.
That's all right.
So he left out the lessons that he's learned, but.
Do you mind if we just get an address as well for the record?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. 5390 Rosemary Avenue South, Boynton Beach, 33472.
And you did speak very well, and there was some feedback, and you did a great job.
Yep.
Oh, thank you. My brother's name is Jonathan. Oh, wow.
And if anybody plays tennis, please join us. You can play with Jonathan.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Jonathan.
All right. Thank you. We have to let the next speaker speak. All right, thank you.
All right, Charles?
Yes. Good evening. Charles Kanter, K-A-N-T-E-R, 2905, South Green Leaf Circle, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426, in the lovely little community of Parkside Square. I came here tonight specifically to thank the board personally and the engineering staff, including especially Mac, you know, Andrew Mac, for finally, after all these years, completing the traffic study, not only completing the study, but actually getting it done. It is so wonderful to see something actually completed that you've been working on for all these years, and I wanted to personally thank you. That was my main mission tonight. Second mission was, I'm sorry I didn't stay later at Chapel Hill. I was there at 1:00 from 1:00 to 1:30, and there was nobody there. I made my rounds, and what a wonderful community, wow. And so I left, but thank you very much for being there. Sorry I missed you.
Hi, I'm Kevin Homer. I live at 2505 Lake Drive North. Not here to talk about Boynton cares tonight, here to keep it real. And here we go. I attended the Police Justice Forum at St. John's last week, and I'm here to discuss my thoughts. While there was an attempt to guide a constructive, open conversation, I witnessed great frustration centered around trust. Without trust, buy-in will not happen nor will positive change occur. Without trust, buy-in will not happen, nor will positive change occur. During the meeting, hostility and frustration overshadowed the real message, that of the community's desire for a better quality of life. This is where the city can help in the most simple ways, by organically decreasing crime, by removing the trash, shopping carts, providing proper lighting, and bringing in better stores, not the ones where a customer goes in to buy a bag of chips and then a bag of drugs. People are a product of their environment. This falls upon your police and code department. I learned that there are too few options for repeat offenders. Many of these people don't know their parents, they're unaware of city youth programs, and they're not given the tools to become responsible adults. Following the meeting, someone told me a story of a Kevin Ballard, a famous ex-con, repeat drug-dealing offender here in Boynton Beach. Kevin was an astute businessman that ended up moving to Georgia, where he's now a successful real estate professional. Kevin was a bad guy turned good, who may not be able to be a police officer, but has the power, influence, and connections to make a positive impact on the troublemakers in town. It is essential to bring people like Kevin into the fold. While we need to bridge the gap between the east and west side, the same applies with the Haitians, Latinos, and black Americans. There's a huge disconnect, maybe even equal to that of blacks and whites. The churches can play a powerful role in this by being the liaison in continuing to promote open communication between the residents and police, as many have become threatened to call the police directly. Also, the community is concerned with traditional policing, where we take a standard report and go about our ways. No, how about I, the police officer, wants you to know me before you need me? I would include going to schools and picnics, knocking on every door in the city, and bringing leaders together to bring about positive change from both sides of town. This also goes way beyond your ten-second Facebook feel-good videos. I'm describing proactive, constructive, consistent, community-relationship engagement. It also includes a culture change from within your department, from the top down. In my personal experience, there's a lot of red tape in trying to speak with the police chief, and once if ever possible, these meetings are often tight-lipped. I'm speaking of community policing as opposed to what has brought you to the crime statistics I have in my hand, which are six times greater than that of the Florida average. In this hand, are three cards of police officers, one paragraph left. Boynton's finest police, who have given me a tremendous amount of hope and encouragement. We have an important decision coming up. Should the internal candidate become police chief, I would hope that he would take these ideas mentioned, as they are constructive and measurable ways to create a safer Boynton Beach. One question on many of our minds for the internal candidate is if these concerns were not addressed before, how and why now? In order for this to happen, we are going to need buy-in from every staff member, from the top to the bottom. I know it can happen, but we need to replace words with actions, and everyone has got to be on board. To the city of Boynton Beach, you were hired or elected because you told a story, a story of integrity and leadership. Only you can determine how this story will end. Thank you.
Mike Fitzpatrick, 175 Southwest Second Street. The Boynton Beach Intercoastal Group and the Sustainable Cities Initiative Political Action Committee are co-hosting a meet-and-greet party for the August 28th party primary and nonpartisan election. This will be held Saturday, June 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00, at the Seagate of Gulfstream Clubhouse. I'd like to invite the city commission and any other, any people in the audience who would like to attend. So far, it looks like we're going to have four Florida House District candidates and two county-wide judgeships, two district school board candidates, and a county-wide soil and water district candidate. Would like to get a head count, so we know how much food and beer and wine to buy, so thank you, hope to see you there.
Is there a link online for your website, or that we could go reserve?
Actually, yes, yes, there is. There is an Evite link through an email. I'll send, I was going to send everybody an email.
Okay. I'll make sure to put that on my Facebook page.
Alright. Thank you.
Each and every person on the dais and all of us in this meeting tonight, I came here tonight to say something to all of you, because we are all one. And we, God only made one set of people, all human beings, and we supposed to treat each other like we love one another. We supposed to care for each other, because God ain't looking at our color. He looking at human beings. And if we don't treat our human beings in the right way, then God gonna deal with us, and he can deal with us with righteousness. So, I'm gonna read something so you all can hear, and I want you to listen to it really carefully. It is Psalms 9. "I will be glad and rejoice in you; I will sing praise to your name, O Most High. When my enemies turn back, they shall fall and perish at your presence; for you have maintained my right and my cause. You sat on the throne, judging in righteousness. You have rebuked nations; you have destroyed the wicked; you have blotted out their name forever and ever. All enemy destruction are finished forever. You have destroyed cities; even their memories have perished. But the Lord shall endure forever; he has prepared his throne for judgment. He shall judge the world in righteousness, and he shall administer judgment for the people in uprightness. The Lord also will be refuge for the oppressed, a refuge in time of trouble." I want you all to go home and reread that, and when you read that, put your name there and ask God if you doing it right for your brother and sister, whether they're black or white. I don't care who you are, you won, because God only make one race, and that's the human race, not dogs and cats. He made the human race. I love you. God bless all of you.
Excuse me, can we get your... Excuse me, excuse me. We need your name and address for the record. I'm s...
My name is Belshiba Eden. I live 1208 Northeast Second Street, Boynton Beach, Florida, area code 33435.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, too.
Good evening. I'm here on two issues, but I'm going to start with the first issue, which is the lack of transparency, which I would say would go with both issues. I sit on the library board, and I was just at our last meeting, and we were told in the meeting that a decision was made within maybe a matter of five days regarding purchasing a church over on Federal Highway to be the temporary location. Now, I look at the screen here, and it says, "To create a sustainable community by providing exceptional community service in a financial, responsible manner." That was not a responsible decision, perhaps, because we just recently had a death with Brightline. Brightline is very near to that location. Federal Highway is a very high-traffic area with different things. Children will also be attending that area for the temporary site, and again, I'm going to go back to transparency. My second issue, yesterday evening, I was at an event. I was told it was supposed to be a process where potentially three candidates would come out and speak to the community, I guess being a part of the vetting process by Ms. Pom... How do you say your first name, ma'am? Ms. Laver... How do you say your last name? Yes, the city manager. So, on my campaign page, because I am running for mayor of Boynton Beach, March 2019, I posted the personnel policy. I posted a brief description of the job description of the city manager, and I did bring an interesting fact that I wanted to discuss, that someone at the meeting yesterday discussed. There are a lot of positions in the personnel department for the city of Boynton Beach that has a lot of decision-making skills. And as the gentleman before me, two gentlemen before me, said about the decision that was made for the prior police chief. Again, I stood here almost two years ago requesting that perhaps, when you were looking for a new attorney, you would look for a different police chief. Now, you're looking for a police chief. You have three males. You currently have an assistant chief acting, that's a female, and you went with three males. Now, the records I would stand is that, again, the desired candidate needs to make sure that they're steady, dependable, approachable chief of police, who will set a positive tone for the organization. That has been lacking. Now, as we move forward, I hope that you will include the community in the vetting process and be transparent. Thank you. 2181 Southwest 15th Avenue, condo N102, Boynton Beach Boulevard, excuse me, Boynton Beach, 33426, and my name is Dr. Stephanie Hayden, Adiemo.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify for you, ma'am, ma'am, the meeting where the public will get to meet the potential candidates for the position is next Monday, I believe? So, the meeting that took place this past Monday was not the city meeting, nor the meeting with that as anticipated?
I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Katz?
To clarify, the meeting...
For the record?
The meeting to meet the three finalists is next Monday, June 11th.
Location?
It is at Fire Station Number 5, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the public is...
And where's the location of Fire Station?
It's the fire station up on High Ridge, the big fire station.
Do you have the address?
On 95.
Uh-huh.
218 High Ridge Road.
So, can you give that thoroughly, because I don't want to take up anybody else's time for the record? All the entire information?
Right.
So, I can be clear? Because we're teachers, right?
So, on Monday, June 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., at Fire Station Number 5, which is located at...
218 High Ridge.
218 High Ridge Road. The public will be invited to speak to and see the three finalists for the police chief position.
Thank you. Teacher, Katz, awesome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Harpsauce, 1711 Wood Fern, Boynton Beach, Florida. On Memorial Day, a samba day, we had a person say, "Well, dead soldiers can rest easy," and, or Marines and sailors can rest easy, "because look what I did. The economy is good, this is good." That was one of the most... That's on Memorial Day, one of the most vile things that I've ever heard. What do you expect from this fascist dictator, who now puts out 21 pages that he wants to run and be, you know, the dictator? And he cannot, he wants to pardon himself, that paramount to guilt. He knows he's guilty. Mueller's going to get him. How the heck can people put up with all of this stuff? He's a racist. What he did to Puerto Rico, we find out, many more thousands of poor people were killed by that storm, and there's still nothing being done. The grid has to be fixed. Another hurricane comes in, it knocks it out. He's racist toward blacks, Puerto Ricans, Jewish people, and he's just absolutely... He's... I've spoken to this plenty of times. He's brought the swamp to Washington, DC. You have a guy in EPA called Pruitt, who's robbing us, who's buying things illegally. That's a swamp right there. You take a look at every person that he's put in his cabinet, I fail to see one that's decent. He, if he allows, we allow him to continue, this election coming up in November turns the tide. If we don't turn the tide, you're going to get knock on a door and get dragged out. And he's playing Hitler's playbook. I've said this time and time again, it's happening, it's happening, and you're going to get a knock on a door. And let me tell you, I came up there in the 30s. He's taking Mussolini's. When he talks, it's Mussolini. I look at him with his jowls. This guy, you can laugh, but when you get the knock on the door, he's dangerous. He's absolutely dangerous. He's a fascist dictator. And let me tell you something, if we don't do something fast, he wants to be a dictator for life. He wants to pardon himself. He knows he's guilty. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Tommy Brown, along with my wife, Darlene Brown, pastor of New Disciples Worship Center here in Boynton Beach, located at 239 Northeast 12th Avenue. My home address, I am also a citizen here in Boynton, 8123 Mystic Harbor Circle in Boynton. To the mayor and to our commissioners, we had the great opportunity on last night, as it was said earlier, to meet with the citizens here in the community. And I am also the vice president for the Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy, where we come together and we gather our citizen, or we speak for them, in concerning the things that are going on and some of their concerns. And last night, we had a tremendous opportunity to gather our community together to hear their voice concerning the selection of our new police chief. You know, really, and we understand, and I think all of us know this, that change is inevitable. There will be change. But however, we know that in changing, doing the same thing is truly, really not change. And so, there are some concerns for my citizens. There are some concern, some great concerns. Three things that was brought out to us on last night. One, transparency. Two, the community involvement in this process that has thus taken place. And lastly, the fairness and the equity for everyone, all applicants. This has nothing to do with race. We believe that each one of our district should have, or should have, an opportunity to be able to either question, to know who the candidates are, and to know the total process. So, therefore, we are asking you as the commissioner and the mayor to please terminate the process until the communities have a voice in this selection. Based on our community concern, they are truly disturbed by the process and the undertaken by the office of our city manager and the hiring of the new police chief for our great city here where we live, in the city of Boynton. We feel that as citizens and members of our community, as taxpayers, we have and are continually, and are continually being unfairly excluded from the very important processes that are taking place within our city. Therefore, again, we're strongly asking for you to terminate the current selection process designed to hire the new police chief. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Minister Dr. Charlotte Wilkins. I was born and raised in the city of Boynton Beach. I come with three things on my list. The first one is to ditto what Apostle Tommy Brown stated. The second one is this, we're not in agreement with the process of selecting the chief. Number two, the next meeting that's being held, you stated on June the 11th, between 6:00 and 8:00, at the meet and greet, we would like for that to be canceled, and whatever it takes, we're willing to do it. Number three, the community, the citizens in the community, need to have some type of say-so when things are out of order. We feel that things are out of order. We're not included in this one. Lastly, lack of transparency, community involvement, the whole entire process, fairness and equity for everyone of all applicants. Thank you again, Charlotte Wilkins, 2604 Northeast Third.
My name is Gloria Perkins. I live at 1951 North... I live at 1951 Northwest First Street in Boynton Beach, Florida, 33435. I've lived here for 48, going into 49 years, I've lived in Boynton. And when I look at the transparency, the fairness, and the involvement of our community on all of our parts, we're liking, and we've fallen short. And I think that at some point in time, that we should stop and seriously take a look at where we are and what we're doing. We, we see on one side of the track, one thing, then the other side, then when we come in the media, then we say we are going to, but at the same time, we go back to doing what we were doing before. So at this point, I think it's time for us to seriously look at, and since we are at the point of hiring a new police chief, let us, as a community, look at those that are chosen as well as those that are choosing. We thank you for your notice.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Sandra Tolliver, 31 Crossing Circle here in Boynton Beach, Florida. I want to deal with transparency. Transparency is the condition of being transparent, clear enough or thin enough to be seen through. That has not happened for us here at the heart of Boynton. What been said and what is being done has been two different things. Community involvement, that is the act of, involvement is the act of or condition of being involved with or participating with something. The heart of Boynton has been eliminated to some degree from being, participating, from participating in the choices that are being made for the heart of Boynton and for the rest of the city. The third thing is fairness or equity for, for everyone, for all applicants. Fairness is being impartial and a just treatment or behavior without favoritism or discrimination. So when we are involved with it, when we have fairness of all, then everyone who is qualified to be, to even be considered a chief of police, which is what a part of this is about, then we should have all of the applicant's information, we should be able to see what their records are, what we can see even from what been chosen, what's been decided from within the city of Boynton with the police department, is the record clean? Is there a little leaven that has leavened the whole lump? So we need to take into consideration that whatever the process has been in the past for choosing a police chief for the city of Boynton, it needs to be changed so that the heart of Boynton and the other districts will be able to see and to know that whoever the choices are, their records are impartial to and able to treat all citizens fairly and without any type of prejudices or discrimination. And that is what we're asking for, that the process be stopped and re, re-looked at again so that not only the city of Boynton, but the heart of Boynton, especially because there's a lot that you all are talking about concerning the heart of Boynton. And if the heart of Boynton, that's the heartbeat, when anything that's a heart, when the heart stops beating, it's dead. So if we don't want our city to die, then we need to consider what is being done to the heart of Boynton.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Ward. I live at 101 Minor Road. Good evening to the whole entire panel. I want to say this first, we repeat what we don't repair. And on saying that, there seems to be some issues, a lot of issues concerning the city of Boynton Beach, and it starts from internally all the way to the outside. It seems to be like just rotten. So I'm just going to say this, that we need transparency. On one instance, I've called out to the police department and I waited 30 minutes and no one showed up. I came to the police department on my own and was advised, "Where do you live?" And when I advised them where I live, they said, "Oh, well, you stay in the heart, so you know, that's kind of your fault to where you chose to live." That doesn't work for me, because the thing is, it doesn't matter where we live, I think everybody wants to be safe, and everybody should be able to live in a safe environment. So therefore, we're asking for transparency, and we're asking that we be a part of this process. And, and the people who are making these decisions, I think that maybe other people need to come in and make, help to make those decisions, because the last decision we made with the last chief, that didn't work very well. So therefore, in this process, I do think that it needs to be stopped, it needs to be re-analyzed, and we need to go forth by bringing in the community, because you know, if you don't really live here and you don't understand what goes on, then, you know, you need like something from the outside to tell you what's going on. So we need transparency. We need community involvement. We need fairness and equity for everyone, for of all applicants. This goes for every race across the board. This goes for every nationality, every group, every religion, everything, because we all live in this thing together. We have to live with one another. So I'm just asking for transparency. Stop overlooking us. Please hear our voice. Don't just, just card us off. What you hear tonight, please take it into account. Cancel this meet and greet, because a meet and greet is, means that you've already made your decision, and you're pretty much, you've, you, it's like, I'm going into a restaurant, and you've already selected what I'm going to eat. I don't want that. Okay? So, thank you.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Evangeline Ward, 1518 North Seacrest Boulevard, Boynton Beach, Florida. To our panel, our-
With the commission.
Well, to the Commissions. Okay, I know them. Okay, to the mayor, to our city manager. Boynton is dear to me. And the reason it's so dear to me, my grandparents moved here in 1923. And a lot of you that are on the panel can't really testify to what we know Boynton Beach to be. Okay? You know Seacrest. We know Green Street, because that's what it was. You know the mall. We know the dairy farm, because we saw it from the beginning until the end. So when you're bringing someone in, know what you're bringing them into, because we didn't just move in this neighborhood yesterday. We are generations. As I stand, I'm a sixth generation bird ward, representing the city of Boynton Beach. I was born and raised here. My children were born and raised here. Okay? Now, when I began to look, and because I, I like to see what people say about people and everything, and when I began to look concerning our city manager, and a lot of you, the mayor, and some of the Commissioners, you gave her accolades that she was the Jason Bourne of city managers. That's what you said. Jason Bourne means she gets things done. That's what you're saying. Okay? My thing then, if she gets things done, let us do it for everybody. All right? They said, out of when they came to give her a raise, they gave her 5.5. All right? Five out of five. Commissioner McCray, he gave her three. He says, "Because you treat, treat District Two like stepchildren." I'm not a stepchild. I'm an original product. So we're asking for transparency. We're asking for community involvement. Don't take away from us for what we built. Okay? God bless you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Yura Diane Lester. My address is 2120 Northeast First Lane here in Boynton Beach. I stand before you because we are asking for transparency, we are asking for community involvement, and we are asking for fairness, not only with the police chief, but within the city of Boynton Beach. I too am a native of Boynton Beach. My family has been here since the 1940s, and we need change within this city. We say we're going to change. We say we're going to be transparent. I have been in meetings with Lori, I have been in some of the other meetings with the Coalition, and we hear a lot. But what we are asking for now is action. Show us that you're going to be transparent. Show us that you really want the community involved, not just put it where you think people are not going to see it or read it, but put it where they can know it. I believe, as Commissioner McCray said, there was a group said that they don't go to church, so we have to make sure they're involved. We also make, make sure that the families are involved. I reach out to my family, and we're asking you as a commissioner, as the commission, and as the mayor, reach out to the community. Come to those places where you know you are really, really needed, not just those where you know you already have the support. I would, I pray that you hear what we're saying. I love the city of Boynton Beach. I love the inner-city District Two, and we're asking you to let's come together and let's make Boynton Beach a better community for all.
Duane Smith, 10163 44th Ave. here in Boynton. I come here in support of the Boynton Clergy Coalition. And from the meeting last night, we all come to understand that through the meeting that they had with the city manager, there was shown a reckless disregard for some questions that they had about the selection process. More or less, out of five questions, they only got one question answered. And now we've done narrowed the selection process down to three people, and it, it caused them to wonder even more how the selection process has come about. So this is why we feel that transparency has not been a forethought or given. I feel that there was a reckless disregard shown to the clergy coalition. And being that, a reckless disregard have been shown to that area of the city, not just to them, but the whole area of the city, because they represent us. Councilman, I'm sorry, your brother?
It's still McCray.
McCray. I, I just heard that, you know, you gave the city manager a three, and just so happened that the complaints and the pleas is coming from the area that you're, you're, you're a council person, that, that you represent, which is Area Two, I think. I'm not good at this stuff. But I, I, I wonder why? We have a history of, of understanding being mistreated and, and, and a certain unfairness been shown to people like myself. I understand that perhaps you may not get no one else of any other color having the same concerns that we do, because we understand, you know, what's, could be coming ahead of us, and we're trying to nip it in the bud right now. So if you, if you will, think about it and, and help us out and try to postpone this, this, this meet and greet until you feel as though everyone is, is, you know, is on board with this thing. Thank you very much.
Hello. We are Pastor Benjamin and Kathleen Hawkins. We live at 2760 Northeast 5th Court, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33435.
What I want to say here tonight, I want you all to listen and understand. We understand that there are some issues in our city. There are concerns that concerns all of us. I think it's time that we come together and involve everybody that's a part of this city to make it better. We can make it better if we keep using the same old bag with the hole in it. We need to patch the hole, put something new in there that's going to work for everybody. We can no longer just stand by and say, "That'll do." It won't do anymore. We asking you, please, please, disregard, stop the meeting greet. Not only that, let us come together and let us seek what appear hard, what is good for all of Boynton, and not just good for a few, to make our city a city that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
And just to add to that, I am an original Boynton Beach. I was born and raised, I was born at Bethesda. That's when they stopped delivering babies at Dr. Ween, you know, when Bethesda came. So you know I've been here a long time. Well, I look good. I'm 54. And I've been here all my life, and I was born and raised here in Boynton Beach. And I'm dissatisfied with a lot of things, even our parks. We had a meeting last night at, at Carolyn Sims Center. You know, you can't even play in that park like we played in it when we were kids. But I can go on Congress across from South Tech, and I got every equipment that I can use for fitness, but there's nowhere in District Two that you can find any of that equipment. So I found that, being that you already know that we want you to stop that meeting, I wanted to tell you of some other things that's not being fair. And I want you to know that we're all going to stand together with this. And don't think we're just here tonight and you won't see us again. This time, you will.
Pastor Hawkins, I wanted to let you know that that park by, on Congress is owned by the county.
Good evening. Pastor Javon Davis, 900 North Seacrest Boulevard here in the city of Boynton Beach. Commission, I stand before you this evening to express my, as well as others', deepest concerns in regards to the selection process for our new Boynton Beach Police Chief. Many of our residents expressed concerns about crime in their neighborhoods and stated their desire to have a good relationship between the Boynton Beach Police Department at several of our community listening sessions. But that is not likely until we acknowledge the historical tension and distrust that exists between our community and our police department. The Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy believes that the selection of a new police chief is an important step, first step towards developing the necessary trust to develop a relationship as we move forward into a new century. This can only be achieved if the residents within these communities' voices are heard in regards to this major decision that will impact their lives and impact others within our great city. With that being said, in unison with other pastors, in unison with other community leaders, and in unison with various residents within our city, we ask that you discontinue the current selection process, which has been deemed flawed, and implement a process that exemplifies transparency, a process that exemplifies community involvement, not at the end, but at the beginning. And also that you implement a process that is fair and equitable- And also that you implement a process that is fair and equitable for all of the applicants. From the onset, transparency has been absent. From the onset, community involvement has been absent. And in the midst of the process, we have come to learn that fair and equality has been absent. And so we want to be assured that we are receiving a change agent that has demonstrated their ability to build community police trust, a change agent willing to modify or eliminate institutional policies that negatively impact certain communities, a change agent open to some form of civilian oversight, and a change agent with a track record of reducing crime within violating, without violating civil rights. And so as I stand before you, I want you to know that this is not a personal attack on our city manager. But this is us coming to you as our commission stressing the importance that you understand that this community's voice needs to be heard. We will not stand for anything less, but we want to make sure that you know that we have come to you as the ones that we have elected into this office stressing to you that I, along with the 999 members I serve at St. John Missionary Baptist Church, that I, along with the nearly 200 individuals who have signed a petition just in one day, and I, along with the Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy, are encouraging you to have the important conversation with our city manager, instructing her and encouraging her to cease this process. God bless you.
Could you hear me?
Can we hear you?
Good afternoon. My name is Ray Whiteley and I am the spokesperson of the Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy and I'm also the founder of Black Vote Matters, as well as a ministered Healing Hands Ministry. The address that I represent is the 223 Northeast 12th Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. Over the last several months, the Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy and other organizations convened a listening campaign to hear concerns and desires of our residents. The listening campaign confirmed what we already knew and Commissioner McCray has been echoing during his tenure on the dice that the issues impacting Boynton Beach's District Two has been ignored for too long. Issues such as the ones that, the one that we're speaking on tonight, the relationship between law enforcement and community. The relationship between the police chief and community leaders is important. It is especially important because the high crime rate, because of the high crime rate in District Two. That's why we inserted ourselves in this process. While finding the most technically qualified chief is important, finding the chief that will foster and build the relationship with community leaders is more important. In other words, finding the one who's the best fit. I'm concerned that the lack of transparency, community involvement, and equity for all the applicants doing this process will bring the levels of distrust to an all-time and dangerous high. The best thing for community, city, and applicants is to abandon this process and embrace one the city can believe in and be proud of. How can the new chief be as successful as he can be when the process he was hired through was considered flawed by the community who needs him the most? Not only stop the process, but we're asking the commissioners and mayor to ask the city manager to speak with the community and bring transparency to what we believe to be a flawed process. Again, like Reverend Davis said, this isn't an attack on the city manager at all, but it's an attack on a process that was not transparent from the beginning, equitable, and fair to all applicants. Thank you very much.
My name is Willie Akins and my address is 726 Northeast 1st Street. I'm the president of Heart of Boynton. I'm supporter of the clergy. I'm the president of Heart of Boynton Care. And I come to you in greetings and also that we have concerns that the people that you have heard today, all saying the same thing, on the same page, doing the same thing, all of the ones that's on the board today, mayor, commissioners, everyone there, we all serve the people. These people that come in here today all represent the people. So now speaking again for some of the people, you hear that they're saying stop the process. You hear them saying they need transparency. You hearing them saying that they need understanding how you go from 82 to 12 to 3. We're saying if you work and serve for the people, there's no guesswork anymore what the people wants. Your job's there is to serve the people, so we're asking you to stop the process. Include each and every one of these, these great fine people here that represents the heart of Boynton because they are the heart of Boynton. And they want to see some transparency. They want to understand the process. It's not, it's not a threat against the city mayor, it's not a threat to anybody. But here's the part, we're never involved in some of the decisions that governs us for five to seven years. No say-so. And it's this process of meet and greet. We have the opportunity to talk to and ask questions. Have any of those candidates actually toured Boynton Beach and find out exactly what Boynton Beach is all about? We're a very unique group of people. We're a very special group of people and we're very powerful people. Now, did you hear some people that's pioneer? Myself, I was born and raised here. But the most important thing is when decisions got to be made like this, we don't take it lightly. And if you're thinking that Boynton Beach is just sleeping, they're not sleeping. Look at the people now. If you want to know, we asking that you serve the people, do what the people has to do, cancel it and involve us in every process of transparency and how you choose the next chief of police. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, staff. Warren Sims, 23021 South Seacrest Boulevard, Boynton. Also a lifetime member, longtime member of St. John Missionary Baptist Church, deacon, and also a member of Boynton Coalition of Clergy. Something that keeps coming back to me and we hear a lot in school today, see something, say something. Hear something, say something. But I must say, I've definitely seen and heard so much over the last two, three weeks of so much unrest and I just felt it would be not becoming of me not to say something tonight. One of the things that have already been said, I just want to echo again, this is not, please do not mistake what's being said in these concerns tonight as an attack on anyone. This is not an attack on our city manager, this is not an attack on our commissioners, our mayor, this is not an attack on our police department because we all respect the jobs that you do. Absolutely. However, this is about challenging, however, this is about challenging the decisions made by city leadership, which is expected occurrence that all leaders understand, that everyone will not always agree and like the decisions we make. Therefore, we must be prepared for challenge. But it's already been stated numerous times tonight of the continuous unrest about the transparency, the community involvement, and the fairness of for all candidates. And we've heard to date, not all three areas have been adequately met, which casts doubt over this entire process. And really, most importantly for me, when I look at it, sets up an unfair situation for our future police chief. Instead of coming into a job knowing this city and its communities, and communities encompasses every community in the city, not just District Two, but are in support of the hire, instead they will come into a job with an uphill climb, which is not fair to any future police chief. For that, it's not a bad idea, ideas, leaders, we know as leaders to pump the brakes sometimes, reflect, reanalyze, and listen to the people. All citizens pose the questions to ourselves, are we doing the right thing with this process or are we creating further unrest and divide within our great city, which I love dearly? Unrest exists because we all want what's best for the city of Boynton Beach. We want to get behind our new chief and support them in healing and rebuilding the divide which exists in our city and our communities. I'm sure even our police officers want a fair and equitable process which includes transparency. As I close, when I think of transparency relevant to this important process, such as a paramount decision of hiring the new police chief, I'm reminded of the process that the school district used to hire our former superintendent, Dr. Vosa. A recruiting firm was hired and the firm presented to the entire process to the public, which included continuous updates throughout the entire process, which was posted on the district's website. The recruiting firm spoke with board members, staff, administrators, went to business people to gain a perspective of what the importance of that hire. All applicants who applied, resumes were posted on the district website from beginning to the end, even down to the final three candidates. Upon the final decision, the county, the county got behind that final decision because the involvement and transparency was impeccable, which made the immediate transition for our new superintendent smooth. And the overwhelming belief was that the school board hired the best fit and the right person for the job because we all were behind and included in the process. It's not a bad idea to stop, pump the brakes, and listen to the people because a decision will eventually be made. But again, we want our new chief to come in feeling we are behind, this city and communities are behind them 100% to dig in and do the work.
Hey, how's it going? 407 Northeast 17th Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. My name is Tori O. I'm here tonight about Carolyn Sims Center, about EZL Hester Center as well. Y'all got a summer camp coming on the 12th of June. Call the kids $500 a piece to get in there. From Boynton Beach Boulevard to 1300 Block, only 2% of our neighborhood kids are going So I don't, that's crazy. Only 2%, $500 for a summer camp? You got the next 100 days, the kids over here in this, in our area, District Two, they don't have nothing to do for the next 100 days? What they gonna, what, what, what they gonna fall back to? Fall back on the transparenting? We've been, they've been saying they've been trying to get this on the, on the budget, you know, about these kids. I talked to you about this Thursday, I mean, yesterday. And I talked to a couple more people about it. I'm not gonna stop. Every time y'all have a meeting, I'm gonna talk about Carolyn Sims, about the park, about the center, because she built a legacy in Boynton. And she, and she, and she put a lot of us through, you know what I'm saying? Y'all ain't, y'all ain't giving nothing free to the neighborhood. No free, no, no free activity going on for the summer of Boynton Beach, nothing. Because you got EZL Hester, they starting football practice. You got to pay for that. You thought, you got a basketball league over there with Bill, whoever he is, that's $60 a player. Everything got to do with, everything got to do with a child in Boynton, it got to do with money. So what, that's, that's my future. I'm 40. My son, my son, 18, you know, he just graduated Lake River High. But, you know, he don't, it's like, what, what he got here? Where could he go to sign up for basketball for the summer, the next 100 days? I don't see nothing in Boynton got something to do with kids that gonna give them something to do for the next 100 days in District Two and, and on the other side of EZL Hester. I don't see it. You got the YCMA way out west or wherever that's at? That cost? And y'all wanna come with these swimming lessons, to my free swimming lessons? That ain't nothing. We know how to swim, we grow up in the canal. So I'm like, you know, I hear, you know, I hear everybody talking about this, you know, this meeting coming, meeting greet, you know? I don't, I'm not going to that neither, you know? But I just want to know what we gonna do about these kids? What these kids gonna look forward to to see Boynton? What they gonna look, what they gonna grow up and see? Nothing, destruction? Because if you come on Ocean Avenue, everything's over here, look nice. So I'm just saying, I'm gonna be at every meeting calling Carolyn Sims, because that's where I grew up at. You know? And I'm, I need some help with these kids.
My name is Sandra Harvey. Good evening. My name is Sandra Harvey, 608 Southwest 3rd Avenue, Boynton Beach. I'm here to ask you to stop the meet and greet that's going to be held on June 11th. I feel that there is a lack of confidence in the process of how the last candidates were selected. I feel that all of Boynton was not considered and I'm asking you to stop the selection process right now until the entire city of Boynton Beach is taken into consideration. Thank you.
Minister Bernard Wright, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries, The Real Talk Radio, and the Robert E. Wells Foundation. God bless all of you all and I thank all of you all who have attended here tonight. I just want to put something to the record. I am piggybacking on everything, every pastor and everyone in the community has come to say about this process. No single solitary person should have the say in choosing a police chief. Listen at these figures. Florida has one of the highest incarcerated rates in the nation. It is above the national average and second only to Texas among large states. Florida has one of the highest percentages of residents who are incarcerated, 100,000. 22% of prisoners in the entire world is incarcerated in the United States. We know about mass incarceration, it is a reality. We know about the private citation of jails and prisons, it's a reality. And when we come to talking about choosing a police chief, law enforcement, it is utterly and vitally important that the community have a say and choose and no one person has this say. We're talking about blacks now. Of every 100,000 people living in Florida, 626 were incarcerated. Whites, 2,555 of them were blacks. Let's get on back and get on down into this now. Blacks make up about half of the prison population in your county and only 19% of the entire population is black. So when we talk about law enforcement, when we're talking about choosing a chief, of course I want to be involved. Of course these people want to be involved. Why wouldn't they? I'd probably be the next one go to jail, even my child, for doing nothing. The next one to get hit in the head for doing nothing, misused and abused. It is a reality that police are actually shooting down cold-blooded our children and our people in this continental United States. It deals with law enforcement. How vitally important is today to stop this process? No bickering or dickering. Is there bias? Yes. Countless times in six years consistently coming down here fighting for my people as a community advocate. Laura has never answered one call of mine conveniently. How convenient it is in six years, I have never had a face-to-face conversation with herself. I come down here. That is not good. I know she has, is not an elected position, so she feels no threat, but she is getting a six-figure. My God, to God be the glory. I think that these things should be attended to and I mean, first and foremost, above and beyond all things, addressed. And as you were saying, during the summertime, our children in the neighborhood, nor the community, our public can go into Carolyn Sims Center, be able to get a drink of water or use the restroom, and it has been going on for eight years. And it's in the name of this young man's mother who raised me and I'm sure if it's such a thing, she's turning over in her grave and if she's frowning down by the grace of God, looking down, she's frowning. I'm saying, I mean, listen, we have been disenfranchised people since day one, get off the ships. We cannot by the grace of God rush racism, biases under the rug. It's real, it exists. Call it when you see it and let's eradicate it, to God be the glory.
I'm sorry, you had your turn to speak. You don't get, there's no two turns.
Oh, there's no two terms?
It's the three minutes, you used your three minutes.
Oh, I just was, for correction, something on the record that you had stated to her about the park that's, that she was referring to, it was Barrier Reef that she was referring to. Colusa is a county park.
Correct, the one by South Tech. Thank you.
I just needed the record to be corrected on that for the mayor. Thank you.
Last but not least, Dr. Pierre de Blas. Last but not least, Dr. Pierre de Blas, 113 Tara Lakes West, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. I'm trying to remain calm through this enormous suffering that I hear, and I hope that the clergy will pay me the respect, I'm a rabbi, please listen to me carefully. I would say this to you. If they do not stop the process, I'm running for mayor, and the process will be made invalid as soon as I'm elected, because this is not a process. And obviously, what Boynton, so do not, you know, we're gonna do it one way or another. Now, as for the, God bless, as for the emergency situation that that wonderful young man in red, he just said there are no summer programs. Where is that guy? Well, he shouldn't be outside. I asked him to stay. Anyway, this is an emergency. I taught in the juvenile justice system, and I am simply, I usually don't do that. I'm asking, begging, demanding of the board, of the mayor, find the money now. Let's have some programs this summer. Otherwise, you know, we used to say it in Michigan, the alternative to affirmative action is riots. If you do not help those kids, you're gonna have a crime wave here. Those kids have nothing to do. So I am repeating that, that is not, if you cannot do it, if there's not enough money in the city, let's raise the money. Okay? When I become mayor, I am donating my salary to the city. I think we should raise the salary, so I can give more to the city. Now, the other, the other thing is, let me be, let me now be a little bit more personal. Those of you who know me, I may be white, but I'm a brother. And Reverend Cheney was indeed my brother, and he's talking to us from heaven. We all love him. And for the Haitian community, I think Christine knows that I am the Polish Haitian sensation, right? That's my name in the Haitian community. So obviously, we need to be integrated, we need to love one another as we are. I don't even notice what color everybody is, because I don't know what color I am. But, you know, let me say something as a Jew, because I'm also a Jew, okay? From the Israeli army. Wait one second. No, no, no. Could you now, the clergy, would you listen? I have been promised from this stage that one day, a rabbi will do an invocation. Many, many promises, it has never happened. That's typical for what the hell is wrong with this city. Too many promises and nothing gets done. God bless you.
Good evening, Woodrow Hay, 427 Northwest 5th Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm just here to make a closing statement, if I can, on what you've heard here tonight about our police chief. I want to say and reiterate emphatically that this is not an attack on the city manager, it is not an attack on the mayor, it is not an attack on the commissioners. This is a discomfort that the community feels, not just District 2. I've talked to others in the city. It is a discomfort with the process, that there were agreements at the beginning that they feel that has not been fulfilled. As was stated earlier, there were at least five that they brought up, and only one was fulfilled. So what they're asking is that you postpone the process at this time, you discontinue the meet and greet, and let's start over again, and take a better look and involve everybody from the beginning all the way through. I think Brother Juan Sims gave a great example on how the school district did it with the website and the transparency and the meeting in between the different phases. So let's do that. Let's give that some consideration. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Annette Gray. I am the founder of GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute, and I just want to say to the gentleman who says that there are no free programs for youth in Boynton Beach, that is not in fact correct. I've been doing youth entrepreneurship programs and our Kidpreneur Leadership Academy for the better part of 10 years in different cities, and my office is based in Boynton Beach. I have a difficult time finding registration for folks to participate. My programs have been supported by the commission and by the police department and by the fire department. My phone number is 561-894-4510, and I have the capacity to put together free programs for our young people. I do it all the time, I do it every summer, and I do it in between every single school break. Please give me a call. I teach young people how to start their own business, they start and run their own business, they run their own city, they tour the city. Annette Gray, GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute. Please call me. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm David Merker. I'd like a couple of things defined, and what I mean by that is, because of our city manager, this time around, the door was open more than it ever has been opened before, so the public can get involved. Never before were meetings like this held. Yes, it can be corrected, and yes, I agree with the speakers that maybe this should be postponed. But what our city manager did this time was open the door like it never has been done before. Previously, when a police chief was chosen, it was black and white. It was done, the door was closed, basically, and I hope you understand what I mean by closed, meaning that it wasn't open, the meetings weren't positively suggested for the people to be involved. The problem was, is that your process wasn't defined so that people would understand exactly the steps that you were doing. But again, I repeat and finalize that this way of picking a police chief was the first time that the door was open. And please, I ask both the mayor, the commission, and the city manager to explain what I'm saying. The door was opened so the people can be more involved.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public comments? Seeing no one coming up, public comments is now closed. Commission, did any of you want to make a comment? Saying none. Moving on to administrative. We're appointing eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards.
I think I have the only one there.
All right. Would you like to make a nomination?
Yes, Anastasia Chandler.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Saying none? Or Christina? All right, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Our next is to authorize the city commission to travel and hotel stay for the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference at the Diplomat Beach Resort in Hollywood, Florida, August 16 to the 18th, 2018. May have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mayor, just a clarifier, did we designate how many people are going, or who's going?
So basically, we're authorized the city commission. I know that I apply just for the registration, no hotel stay.
Same here.
And is there anyone else from the commission? I think Lori also.
I plan on going down for two days.
Okay. So we have the, the two members of the commission, which needs our requirement, because it's within the 40 miles, I think, distance for anything additional for hotels or meals. So we have the motion first, and we have it second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Next is appoint a voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, August 16 to the 18th, 2018.
I'd like, I'd like to nominate you mayor, since you're on the Board of Directors of the League of Cities.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Excuse me, if, everybody who's in the audience would like to make still comments, you know, please go into, out into the lobby. Moving on to consent agenda. Do we have any items that would like to be pulled? Saying none, may have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
You guys, that was, that was good. So I'm gonna say Vice Mayor was first, and Commissioner was the, McCray was the second.
Jinx, you mean.
Any discussion? Saying none? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bids and purchases over 100,000. Authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Killer Brew Inc. of Lakeland, Florida for construction of water distribution system, water main upgrades on ficus and a hibiscus tree drive, as shown in the attached drawing, in the amount of $368,082 and 10% contingency amount. May have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Saying none? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to authorize utilizing the Palm Beach County bid 17-005ZG for landscape installation with the cut-above landscape and maintenance sink of Loxahatchee, Florida, for Public Works Forestry and Grounds Division to salvage and relocate existing trees and palms located within the Town Square project for a amount not to exceed 120,000.
I have public comment by former Commissioner Mike Fitzpatrick.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that with discussion.
All right. Yes, we'll open up for public comment.
Mike Fitzpatrick, 175 Southwest 2nd Street, says not to exceed 120,000. Some of the backups said it could cost up to $2,000 per tree, so that could be as little as 60 trees or a few more. What I'd like to know is there any, what's the priority of trees? I would like to say it should be natives first that are appropriate to this ecosystem area of the state. For instance, the mahogany trees need a lot of watering, they aren't really located here, but the live oaks and the royal palms, I think, should be taken first. And then another question is, what about the understory, the bushes and things like that? Are they gonna be saved, like the coonti for another butterfly plants? I'd just like to say that I was talking to my wife, Lisa Hanley, and she would, if there's no plans for those, she would help organize a plant rescue for volunteer citizens to come in and take those out beforehand. Thank you.
Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way, what is the status on the K-Poc tree, the one that's over by the amphitheater? Is that included in this 120,000? Because I know a lot of people who would actually chain themselves to that tree, because it's big and it's beautiful, and it's one of our few really, really big specimen trees.
I think that is earmarked to stay. That's, that's in a plan. Protect at all costs.
Yay, that's the right answer.
Andrew, is that correct?
Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works Engineering. The relocation is not a part of this, that tree, that is supposed to stay, that is on the private parcel, so we're working with the developer to work around it, yes.
Great thing, that'll be great news to the city residents. Thank you.
And Andrew, regarding the, the question regarding all the trees that, or the shrubs necessarily, not the trees that could be planted and taken, could we have a community, I guess, event where any tree, any shrubs that aren't slated to be moved can be taken?
We are working with Eleanor and, and Risk to come up with a program that, that the city would be amenable to that, yes. That is something that we're looking at doing.
Working on that actually already, to have like a community drive-by, pick up the plants and take them.
Okay, wonderful.
And I'll, I'll contact Mike and definitely take him up on the offer of coordinating that. We would, we were gonna reach out to Mike.
Yeah, we'll need help.
Okay.
And just a quick question, Andrew, the 100, up to 120,000, is it, would it be more financially feasible to buy new trees versus to actually move for 120?
Not, not the size of the trees that we're looking at. The trees, the mature trees over there, if you had to buy them, and you can see there, it's one species within 4,000, it's 2,000 to relocate it. So the size of the mature trees that we're moving is worth relocating them.
So financially feasible?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Javaris Russ, 235 Northeast 27th, no, Northeast 11th Avenue, that's my other address. With all of the information that you guys heard today, I wanted to ask the mayor directly, what do you feel about the decision about the police chief being made or being made? How do you feel about the community's disagreements or issues about that?
All right, oh, that's not on the item, but the commission wanted a discussion on the city manager's report, just to have a, I guess, a conversation. I think we had an opportunity to speak after public comment, and nobody on the commission elected to. And so...
He speak for all y'all?
No, basically, he spoke for himself. And so we're saying that we're not having a discussion in the sunshine regarding what went, well, the public comments that we had. I guess you can all speak to us individually and get our own answers later.
So you have no comment on what went on tonight?
Mayor, excuse me, we have a thing on the floor that we need to settle first before we...
No, that's, there, there is no, unless you have a discussion regarding item B, you have to sit down, please.
No, I'm just gonna leave. All right, thanks.
All right, so any further discussion from the board? Saying none? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to new business. Authorize the finance department to reduce the allowance for uncollectible accounts and the account receivable amount by $481,791, reflecting past due amounts on 2,593 customer accounts for the period between July 2014 through November 2017. Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Saying none? No discussion from the audience? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Proposed resolution number R18-079, authorize issuance of $11,650,000 in principal amount of utility system revenue bond, Series 2018, in order to pay for capital improvements to the city's utility system and to pay for certain costs of issuing the Series 2018 bonds. May have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Discussion from the board? Saying none? All those in favor state so...
I'd like to have discussion, I'm just saying, really, when we're spending $11 million...
You wanna know what the capital improvement is?
I know what the capital improvement is, but I don't think the people that's sitting out in the audience know what the capital improvement is, or, you know, when you're spending $11 million, somebody need to tell the, the public what we're spending $11 million for.
We have, we have a little two, three slide presentation maybe show you?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, Colin Graff, Assistant City Manager. I, I did wanna show you a few slides, just because it is a lot of money. We are creating, as you're all aware, a new utility called District Energy. Whoa, something's leaking. This building is definitely leaking, but, so, that's water dripping on the slide, on the projector.
It's a smudge inside the lens that we would have to completely dismantle the entire device, which is not something we can do internally, and we have no idea how it got there. It is the strangest thing, we discovered it today.
So, the slide is clear, but I'll just read what it says. We're, we're, the bond is to build a central energy, a district energy system which creates chilled water for buildings to provide AC. It's an energy-efficient way to provide AC in the buildings. So this project is being designed to serve the Town Square project plus other private development that's been planned and approved in this area. It's starting with 2,400 tons of capacity, that's enough to do, you know, 100 homes, 200 homes, something like that. I can't do the math, but figure five tons per home. It's expandable to 3,600 tons to serve the developments east of Town Square. It's a rate-funded utility. The customers will be paying rates to pay for this bond and pay for the utility. The rates they'll be paying are about 5% to 7% less than what they would pay if they had an additional cooling system, so the customers will actually save some money. And it's, the utility set up to operate, it's projected... And it's, the utility is set up to operate, it's projected to operate with positive cash flow by January 2020 when the Town Square Project is complete. So it's a utility that's self-funding and it funds itself as it, as we add customers. Just real quick, I just want to show some pictures. The central energy plant will be on the parking, where the parking lot is right now, that's east of Police Department Building, the CRA parking lot. It's actually going to be a separate building from the fire station, but right next to it. So it's going to look like one building even though it's a separate building. But that's just some pictures of what it's going to look like. And then, so just some of the customers, the first customers, of course, City Hall, the Cultural Center, Fire Station One, the South Residential Apartments, the North Residential Commercial Apartments, the Hotel, and then, of course, the Restaurants and Parking Garages. And we're also sizing it to serve the Villages and Ocean One. They both expressed interest when they develop. They're not developed yet, but when they develop, they've expressed interest. So I just want to show you a real brief, quick preview of what this money is for to build. It's to build this new utility.
Colin, what kind of noise? Do they put any kind of a decibel, noise decibel on these?
Yes. So the bill, first of all, all of the mechanical equipments inside the building and it will be insulated for noise. And then the cooling towers will be on top. But as you can see, and I don't think the pointer works on this, but if you can see the building, the far end of that building where you see the two doors, that would be the chilled water plant. You will not see the cooling towers because they're actually behind the wall. And that's a sound attenuation wall. So the towers themselves will be attenuated. So the plan is to not actually hear them off the site. So we've designed this to be totally quiet and so you can't hear it.
My two questions are, is that would this be possible to reach the Ocean Breeze East site?
Ocean Breeze East.
It's on Northeast 6.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've got a lot of projects in my head. I mean, that's close enough. It is, it is close enough. It depends on the, you have to look at the value of the pipe, whether or not it's economical not to go up that far. But that's only three blocks.
Six blocks.
Six blocks. It's a little bit far.
Four blocks, sorry.
Yeah, it's a little bit far, but it can. I mean, I, we, you can run chill water lines that far. So it's definitely a potential if they come in and talk to us.
The good news is Northeast First Street has had, you know, been ripped up a couple times, so.
It has been. But it's getting better.
I hope so. The other question is, is that I know that it's supposed to be quiet on the outside. I know that we have sometimes sleeping firefighters there because they have 24-hour shifts. Will that also be insulated as well for the sleeping quarters?
Absolutely. It's been designed with double walls and then all of the area, there's actually a double wall between the buildings, then there are stairwells and mechanical rooms before you even get to the sleeping room. So we've kind of got a whole bunch of different things to insulate that sound. So there'll be no sound inside the fire. But we've also talked to the fire department. They actually like a steady noise when they're sleeping because they say it helps them sleep better. So either way, they're going to be happy. But no, we've designed it so there's no noise in the.
The new version of a sound machine.
But no, it's been designed so there's no noise in the fire station. That was a little bit, being a little facetious, but.
Okay.
Okay. I was going to ask you who you talk to.
Colin, my take is that suppose, suppose that the sound system does not work, what is going to be our fallback?
We can put more sound attenuation in if it doesn't work. Absolutely.
For more money?
But it's, yes. We have some contingency built into the budget just in case. It's a utility, so we always plan for those kind of expenses in our budget because it still has to operate and pay for itself.
Right. See, I like to ask questions like this because once it come up again, then nobody can tell me that nobody asked the question. I'm just saying, so.
We've been to plants that you can't hear, so we know it works. We know we can make it work that way.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
As a point of clarification, does this cost the taxpayers any extra or additional dollars?
No. This is funded totally by the ratepayers of the utility itself.
Thank you.
Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to legal, proposed ordinance number 18-009, first reading. Jim?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 15, Article 8, Chronic Nuisance Property Code, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
Need to swear anybody in?
No, this is a legislative amendment.
Wonderful.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I guess, do we have a presentation for what is changed? No. All right. All those in favor state so, oh, it's already been motioned in second.
I have a second.
All right. Judy, may I have a roll call, please?
Ray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
And Commissioner Katz. The vote is five to zero.
I guess on the second reading, can we have a little bit more of a presentation, what changes are required?
Yes, sir.
Because I believe we just did this Chronic Nuisance Property Code last year.
Yeah. This was, I was going to say, these are really just fine tuning some terminology within the body of the ordinance for conformity to make sure that we don't open up a small crack for somebody to cut through and not comply with the code. And we'll point those out more specifically next time.
Thank you.
There's actually was some language where one, one section kind of conflicted with another when it came to the measurement of what determines a chronic nuisance, the number of violations. And we didn't catch that on the first adoption, so we're fixing it.
Moving forward to item B, proposed ordinance number 18-007.
Remove from the table.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is removed from the table. Jim?
Ordinance 18007, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the City of Boynton Beach Code of Ordinance as Chapter 10, Garbage, Trash, and Offensive Conditions, Article 3, Abandoned Property, Section 10-51.5, Abandoned Personal and Real Property, to clarify the definition and cleanup language to you as to when registration is required, providing for repeal of laws in conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date.
May have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right. Yes.
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record again.
My name is Kristy Ward, 101 Minor Road, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33435. I was kind of trying to question if we could retract back to the chronic nuisance because I didn't understand what exactly you guys were, what that was.
So that was a first reading and so we will have another second reading for that Chronic Nuisance Abatement Ordinance, or Chronic Nuisance Property Code.
A property code?
So we will come back in another meeting to discuss that, probably on June 19th. Is that correct? So the next city commissioners' meeting on June 19th, we will finalize the language that is updated.
Okay. Is there any, any place that we can possibly like, like view that or find out what that is exactly and how that entails to us?
Excuse me, you can meet one-on-one with Mr. Woods. I'm just saying, he could explain that to you. I'm just saying, he's over our community standards.
All right. Thank you so much.
And we can provide you a copy of the ordinance as well. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yep.
And Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
The vote is five to zero.
All right. The last. Jim?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to ordinance 286.0118 Florida statutes, I'm requesting a closed-door session with the commission to discuss litigation, Gail Jenkins and Leon Jenkins, plaintiffs versus